Good evening. If you would, if you have cell phones, please take a moment at this time to make sure they are on silent or off. And please be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. For those of you physically present in the council, and I'm so happy to have you all here. If you'd like to speak during our meeting, please complete a request to speak form and give it to our city clerk. Those that are participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time. Each speaker will be given three minutes to speak. This time, I will convene our regular city council meeting. If I can find a gavel. Called to order, the city council meeting for the City of Grand Terrace for September 27th, 2022. And tonight, we have an invocation that will be offered by Pastor Rex Arnold of Center Point Church, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Wilson. If you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
There we go. Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Those who are so inclined, please bow in prayer with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the rich blessings you have granted the City of Grand Terrace and her people. As her leaders and members of her community come together this evening to conduct the business of city government, will you share generously of your wisdom with us? Grant everyone involved in these proceedings clarity of mind and sureness of speech, and let peace and a spirit of fellowship rule in each heart here. Would you continue to bless this city and her people, making her an example of what can be done when we come together? We pray these things in the name and authority of your Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation of America, in whose full liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Rex. Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Councilmember Robles?
Present.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Present.
Mayor McNebo?
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Also tonight, I want to welcome Scott Ward from our supervisor Rao's office. He's here with us tonight. And I'm going to ask, do we have any reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda?
We would like to move, remove item nine, please.
Item nine. Okay, thank you. So on to special presentations. We have five different groups to give special presentations to tonight, and that is so wonderful. So I'm going to give an overview of the different groups, but then we're going to take them one by one. Tonight, we are recognizing the Grand Terrace Little League Junior Softball, the Grand Terrace Little League Major Softball, the Grand Terrace Little League Minor Softball, the Grand Terrace Little League Major Baseball, and the Grand Terrace Little League Minor Baseball. So we will start with one group, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to have, for each group, we're going to have the coach for these teams come up, tell us a little bit about your season and how things are going. And then what we will do is we will have the coach come and join the council up here on the, right in front of the dais, and we will have you help us to read the certificate name for each of our players. The players will come up, they will receive their certificate, they will be congratulated by the council members. And you will also receive a lapel pin in the shape of our logo for the City of Grand Terrace that you can wear proudly, and when people ask you why, you have that on and you can brag about your team. All right? So we'll begin first with the Grand Terrace Little League Junior Softball, and may I have the coach come forward to the lecture?
Up right here or up there?
Right there, just to speak, and then we'll have you come up here. So you can, Coach, if you'll tell us your name?
My name is Mikey Navarro. I coached the junior softball girls right here in Grand Terrace. We only had one junior team for our league, so we ended up interleaguing with other cities. We had a great season. Started off slow, only had nine girls, 10 girls. We did great. I hope that I taught these girls something that they could take to the next level with them. When it came to All-Stars, we did actually really great. We placed third place at state, so we did pretty good with that. Yeah. Sorry, I wasn't expecting to talk.
Okay. That's all right.
But yeah, I built up a relationship with all these girls that I really enjoyed and it actually encouraged me to keep coaching and want to coach more. So each one of these girls that I coached inspired me, and I hope that I inspired them.
All right.
So yeah, I don't know.
That's nice. That's wonderful, perfect. If you would come up here and join me, and the rest of the council will come as well, and I'm going to have you help me read the certificates. Each of the certificates are from the City of Grand Terrace. In celebration of your 2022 All-Star District 21 Championship, Grand Terrace Little League Junior Softball presented this 27th day of September 2022, and it has signatures of all the council members, and of course, the name of each player. And so, Coach, if you would, read the name, and Player, please come up with us. So the players that were not able to make it, we will make sure your coach has your certificate and your lapel pin.
Alana Guzman.
Alani Maylo.
Congratulations. Yeah, if you would, stand in that little area right there, because then we're going to have everybody come back up and join us for a picture.
Alexia Carey.
Amy Mendoza.
Deanna Sandoval.
Debony Martinez.
Delilah Hernandez.
Julie Elba.
Leah Navarro.
Natalia Cabrera.
Olivia Guevara.
Sienna Gonzalez.
Trinity Bavadi.
If you would, ladies, join us over here for a picture. Councilmember Wilson? We're going to have the pictures here today. All right, another round of congratulatory. All right. May we have the coach for Little League Major Softball come forward? Welcome. Tell us your name.
My name is Tommy Rivera. I wasn't the actual manager for this All-Star team, but I, the coaches couldn't be here tonight, and majority of the girls, but I coached against these girls, and I am the, I was vice president of the league, now the incoming president of the league, so I know these girls really well. These girls, most of them have been playing since they were eight, representing this league, and All-Stars returning, and this is their fourth championship that they have won since eight years old to 12 years old. So all these girls have done a great job leading the way, and for girls younger than them to hopefully see what they could become at a young age to what they are now, a lot of them are in middle school now, and not only good ladies on the field, but also off the field, so we're extremely proud of them, including all of our teams here.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. We're very proud of them. These certificates also from the City of Grand Terrace in celebration of the 2022 All-Star District 21 Champion, Grand Terrace, but this is Little League Major Softball, presented this day and signed by all the council members. So if you would, please.
Alana Guzman.
Alani Maylo.
Alejandro Gutierrez.
Amy Mendoza.
Angel Gamaro.
Aubrey Brown.
Darla Sandoval.
Avalina Padilla.
Genesis Ulobari.
Jalen Bachman.
Olivia Guarva.
Peyton Orm.
Cassali Barker.
Victoria Villaforte.
And ladies, if you'll join us over here?
Thank you.
Thank you. One more round of applause. If we could have the coach of the Grand Terrace Little League Minor Softball.
Okay, so I was the coach for this team.
So you're a busy man this year.
I am, yes. This is fascinating, is this group, this team right here is a bunch of new players, only a couple of players that were returning, so we had a lot of new All-Stars this year, and it's an age group from eight to 10. And not only did they succeed in our expectations, but again, we finished third in state as well, so the future is bright for this team, and the next age group is where hopefully maybe we can make it to San Bernardino, where we could represent this city on ESPN in the next year or two, so that's the goal.
All right. Sounds exciting. All right. And so these certificates say, "In celebration of your 2022 All-Star District 21 Championship, Grand Terrace Little League Minor Softball."
Breezy Alvarez.
Zatali Barker.
Estelle Macias.
Gabby Collins.
Genesis Ulobari.
Haley Villanueva.
Harlan Hannah.
Hermione Gonzalez.
Jade Pacheco.
Jalen Valencia.
Peyton McCusker.
Ruby Valenzuela.
Savannah Noville.
Taylan Bivaldi.
And that's it? All right, if you would stay here again? Congratulations. May we have the Grand Terrace Little League Major Baseball coach come forward? And if you would come, oh, go ahead.
Hello again. My name is Ryan Pacheco. Assistant coaches with Brian Pope and Hector Calderon. Couldn't be done any of this again without these guys again, so I appreciate the invitation back. Second time in a row, district champions. We actually lost the finals for section. I think it's the farthest any Grand Terrace major team has ever gone for baseball. Got close to winning the section, but didn't quite make it. Hoping, now that our kids are aging out, hoping to be here again next year, maybe in the softball capacity with my daughter. But these boys, seeing them over the years in major baseball on the field, now I think eight or nine of them are my middle school students at Terrace O's right now, it's going to be fun watching them grow for the next couple of years. So it was a pleasure working with these guys and these players, and also the parents that supported them, so it was awesome.
And these certificates will say, "2022 All-Star District 21 Championship, Grand Terrace Little League Major Baseball."
Benjamin Hernandez.
Brady Pope.
Eli Calderon.
Ethan E.P. Palomino.
Gabe Lopez.
James Pacheco.
Mikey Collins.
Roman Palos.
William Big Willie Eckberg.
And we have three players not present, Deegan, LJ, and Morgan.
If you would, gentlemen, stay here. Come all the way down here, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, round of applause. Congratulations. May we have the coach of the Grand Terrace Little League Minor Baseball? I spoke too soon, you're a very, very busy man.
Can you tell we're a small league and a small community? That's why I coached the little kids, because I'm still taller than them. With this group, this is a special group of boys right here. A lot of them, most of them are returning. We fell just short of the goal last year, came back, we won their championship, lost in the championship of the second round. Again, with a community like this, the best part about this team, too, is the closeness. Dealing with adversity last year, and you know, sometimes you got to learn to lose before you learn to win, and this team has accepted that and has excelled, and just like we just recognized our 11-12s, you know, they set the bar for this team, and looking forward to great things to come for this team the next couple of years with our league, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. And so these certificates, of course, say, "2022 All-Star District 21 Championship, Grand Terrace Little League Minor Baseball."
Alexander Dabodio.
Blue Bradshaw.
Caleb Orm.
Damias Galván.
Desmond Bolanos.
Congratulations.
Isaiah Hernandez.
Isaiah Mendoza.
Jonathan Gutierrez.
Camp Corona.
Louis Delatorre.
Congratulations.
Nate Collins.
Sebastian Cabrera.
Tyson McCusker.
All right, thank you. Okay, scoot this way a little bit more. One more round of applause. Well, I could go the rest of the night doing that. This is a really exciting thing to have happen at a council meeting. Thank you so much to all of you for being here to let us celebrate with you. It seems like just yesterday, we had opening ceremonies, but clearly, it wasn't just yesterday. You have all put in a lot of work, and have your coaches, and the parents have really, really put in a lot of work to support this effort, and thank you so much to all of you. Please, another round of applause. Next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They are to be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for removal of items for discussion? Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I'd like to remove and discuss five. Item six, item seven, and item 11.
Five, six, and seven.
Five, six, seven, eleven.
And 11, all right. And we are, number nine has been taken off. Okay, so at this time, do I have a motion for the balance?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we are voting on items one through four, eight, 10, and 12. Motion by Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Robles.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. So item number five, Community Benefit Fund Grant Award to Grand Terrace Elementary PTA in the amount of $1,725.24. Mayor Protem.
Just thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to have somebody from the PTA, because they usually come up here to represent. And I just want to hear, kind of give them a little advertisement of what they're doing, you know, made this money for, and what they have going on for the community. So I'd just like to hear from, represent from the PTA.
Do we have anyone here from the PTA tonight? Terrace View?
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having us. We are planning our annual Red Ribbon Week hosted in October. We have requested the, excuse me, I'm a little nervous. We have requested a community benefit amount, fund to purchase items that the children will be using. Playground equipment, we would like to purchase balls, jump ropes. We will also be purchasing some special items for our special education class specifically. So basically, that is what we are requesting the funds for.
If you would, please state your name for the record.
Oh, my name is Rachel Plum. I am the Terrace View PTA president.
Thank you.
At Terrace View Elementary. Sorry.
That's okay. Wonderful. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Did you have any questions of them? Mayor Protem.
Thank you for coming. So basically, what is the red ribbon? You know, I know you said you were wanting the funds for that certain thing, but it says for drug and health awareness. Can you just elaborate for that for people to know?
Thank you. Yes, Red Ribbon Week is a nationwide campaign that happens in October every year. Basically, it is to campaign against drugs. But we want to make sure that the children understand health is the key. That is our slogan. The key for me is health. So we want them to not only be aware of drug dangers, we want them to know about protecting their mental health, their dental health, their physical health, and basically, that's what we are trying to put on this year. I'm so sorry, I'm a little nervous.
That's all right. I just want, you know, so you can, you know, speak your word, what it's about and stuff to get the word out. I appreciate all your help you're doing it.
Thank you. I, we greatly appreciate doing this for the students and the community.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. Any requests to speak from the public on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and further discussion.
And make a motion to pass item five, Mayor.
Second.
All right, motion by council member, excuse me, Mayor, motion by Mayor Protem Hussey and second by Councilmember Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you, Ms. Plum, for all the help and work that you put into this.
Thank you. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Item number six, Community Benefit Fund Grant Award to Grand Terrace High School Wrestling Team in the amount of $2,000.
Same thing, Mayor. I'd like to, when wrestlers or one of the representatives come up and speak on, if we have. Tells what they need a grant for.
All right. Good evening, honorable members of the council. My name is Vince Rodriguez. I am the head coach for the Grand Terrace High School Wrestling Team. I've been a coach for, since 2018. This will be my fifth year, but this is my second year as a head coach. So I'm still learning the ins and outs of, you know, just the paperwork and all the stuff that goes into being a head coach rather than an assistant. Our 2020 season was cut short due to the pandemic. The schools shut down, so our team lost about a year and a half of fundraising that we could have been using during that time because there was a, the shutdown. So it's been an uphill battle ever since. We've been trying to recover from that. Since I took over the program last year, I had to kind of start from ground zero with everything. So it was a little struggle last year. Currently, our team is considered coed, meaning that the boys and the girls are considered coed on the same team. But in actuality, it's made up of three teams, the boys varsity, the junior varsity, and then the girls team. And we have to split the fundraisers, the fundraising funds amongst the three teams evenly. So our team is in, at the moment, our club is actually doing fundraising right now to try to get things going. But we're asking for, you know, a little push because of our little setback that we had. We've seen an interest in our, a lot of girls signing up for the wrestling team this year. And we need to get them uniforms. The uniforms for the girls and the guys, they're cut differently. For the boys, it's kind of lower on the chest and in the arm areas. And for the girls, their cuts are, you know, have them covered up in their upper body. And so with the amount of girls that we're receiving on the team, we need to get more uniforms. And they're kind of pricing, like as I said, we have to split our funds between the three teams evenly. So we want to try to fundraise for the girls, and we just need a little jumpstart. The thing I feel about wrestling is kind of under the radar kind of sport. Not too many people know, but it is an exciting sport. And sometimes I feel that our wrestlers don't get the credit that they deserve for the extremely hard work that they do. Because they have to condition their bodies to be able to keep up in matches. They have to maintain a certain weight for their weight class. And a lot of them, on top of that, have to do that while, you know, maintaining their grades and all that. A lot of my wrestlers are scholar athletes, so they do have a good GPA. I also have a couple, one of my wrestlers, last year she placed 15th in her class as an accomplishment. And she did that all while doing, going through the wrestling program, which is extremely hard. So we're just asking for the community, see if they can help us out with anything. And we greatly appreciate it. You can see my, my team will greatly appreciate it, too. And this is one of my assistants. Her name's Marissa, and she would like to say something, too.
Good evening, honorable members of the council. Like our coach said, I'm Marissa. I'm one of the assistant coaches. So last time I stood before you all, it was actually my senior year as an actual member of this team. And I remember that feeling of being granted the funds and being so excited for the future of a program that I love so much. And then COVID happened. So those funds were used to buy a brand-new wrestling mat for us. Unfortunately, that mat would not have been seen or used for two years. It was also used to buy a complete, brand-new set of singlets for our boys. Once again, not being seen or used for two years. As for the rest of the funds, it was unfortunately never able to be used to its fullest potential, whether that was more tournaments for our team, a very nice banquet, or just so many other possibilities. So right now, we come to you as a pretty, brand-new team, asking for all of these possibilities that I mentioned to become a reality. When our head coach so graciously took on this program, he really started from ground zero. The number of returning wrestlers was only four, when usually about 80% of our team would be made up of returners. So all we had really was a couple of volunteers who loved wrestling and so many brave kids willing to jump headfirst into one of the toughest sports and out of a pandemic on top of that. Even our first season back was extremely rocky. Many of our matches against schools in our district were canceled, many tournaments were canceled, and even our practices were canceled. With this fund, we hope to provide an amazing season to all of these hard-working, amazing kids sitting behind me. They deserve it so much. We could have more tournaments, so many more fundraising opportunities, and brand-new singlets for our ever-growing girls team. And that's just so near and dear to my heart. And I just thank you for your time and consideration for our team.
All right, thank you so much. Questions? Councilmember Allen.
Thank you for that, Coach and Assistant Coach. Excuse me. So it really makes me personally feel good also to be able to be a part of this effort, you know, on the role that I play in it. And I was hoping that, you know, the ones that had left earlier, I'd get a chance to, you know, my hat is off forever and ever to the volunteers who coach our youth and represent them in the surrounding communities. And, you know, I'm so proud of them because we never get any bad reports, you know. There's never anything like that. It's always, they're so professional and they're such a winning team. And so anyway, my question is, I do have one. I know that's what this is about.
Thank you.
And so that's why I like being a part of this effort, and I'm glad you came to us. But I was just wondering if you've tried any other fundraising efforts? Because I know this is not a cheap sport to be in. So, you know, and if you've been successful with any of those.
Yeah, currently, right now, we're, like I was saying earlier, we're in our building phase of our team. I just started a club of the students, and their job is to take care of fundraisers. Actually, tomorrow at Juice It Up Down the Hill, right there in Colton, we're doing a fundraiser. They're going to be helping us out with, giving a percentage of the proceeds to our team for the night. We also are doing a T-shirt fundraiser that's coming up. A lot of these things, we have to get approved by the schools and not just doing them, you know, under the table so that we're transparent with the money and making sure that the funds go back to the school. So it is a little bit of, it takes time, but yeah, we, we got that coming up. We also have, we've been giving out donation or asking for sponsor letters to some of the local businesses, reaching out to them. And we used to host tournaments at our school for the youth, for the elementary and junior high, but we weren't allowed to because the school wasn't allowing us to have unneeded outside people into the school. So that's where we used to make a lot of our fundraising money for the students. But yeah, we're just trying new things, and like I said, I'm still trying to learn as I go. But yeah, we do have stuff in mind.
Well, thank you for your response. And Ms. Plum, and also for the PTA, thank you for what you do. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Further questions? Mayor Protem.
Coach, believe it or not, I wrestled way back when. Do they still have those suits that make you lose a lot of weight and you're sweating and you have to go and...
They do, but we're not allowed to use them no more. It's a...
Because I was a buck thirty-five and they still wanted me to lose weight. I don't understand. I mean, now I wish I was a buck thirty-five.
Well, now, you know, since that was an issue, you know, there was a lot of wrestlers actually literally killing themselves trying to get down to weight. But now what they do is, our athletic director checks the body fat content of each student, and they're not allowed to go below a certain percentage. Like for boys, I believe it's 8%, and girls, it's 12%. So it gives us a, it's like real professional now, like it gives us a timeframe of when they can lose a weight and how much weight they can lose. So they're not going crazy, so they avoid throwing on the trash bags and go running around the sun like we used to do in the old days. So, yeah.
Well, one other question. When's your season and what days you, you know, I mean, do you have a schedule or...
Yeah, we just got a schedule. Our gym, I don't know if you guys heard, our gym at the school, it got flooded. So now we're going to have to have, we might have to have home matches, or, I mean, away matches, or try to work them out in the cafeteria. But we got our schedule. I believe our first, we're going up against Martin, or Notre Dame High School, December 15th. And I have a, we made a social media Instagram account, and we're going to start posting all our schedule stuff on there. So, yeah. And we got tournaments on the 19th on, through the rest of the year.
Well, thank you and good luck with your season.
Oh, thank you very much. You appreciate it.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
All right, further questions? All right, thank you. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and any further deliberation.
I'll make the motion or the second.
Okay, so we have motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, item number seven, Community Benefit Fund Grant Award to Christ the Redeemer Catholic Church in the amount of $310. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, the same thing, Mayor. If we had a representative here and just talk about the car show and when the date is and the time, and if we have anybody.
Doesn't look like it.
No.
All right. Is there any public comment on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Did you have a question? I'm sorry, Mayor Protem.
No.
Okay.
I'll just go ahead and move the item if we don't have anything.
Okay, so. Motion by Mayor Protem.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, item number 11, Approve Agreement with Loma Linda Heating and Air Conditioning for Replacement of 10-Ton HVAC Unit Servicing Grand Terrace Civic Center Community Room. And Mayor Protem.
Hey, Mayor, when I was reading this item, you know, I remember during COVID that we used some of the COVID funds for the new HVAC units and AC units. And I thought we were taking care of, but I guess not. I just wonder if we could elaborate why we need to spend $27,000 on a unit that I already thought that was taken care of. I don't know if you guys thought the same thing. And reading into it and asking questions, I didn't realize we had different units. So I don't know if we could elaborate on this, because some of the public want to know, too, what we spent our COVID funds on. And one of the answers was, you know, we used it for the library and for, you know, people's, you know, clean air here and the health. And then also, we're spending money again on another air conditioning unit. And it seems like, since I've been on the council for seven years, we're always spending money once a year on these units. So I don't know if the city manager could give us some insight on this?
Sure.
Mr. City Manager.
Actually, there are six units that service City Hall. One that covers, and that's the one that was replaced in 2020 with using the COVID money, which is a 40-ton unit. That's a fairly, fairly large and productive unit as far as the amount of air that it's, the volume of air that's able to cool. But that only services the City Hall building upstairs, downstairs, kind of the offices and the main corridor area. Part of the work that came in with that also was the air filters, the UV filters to kill whatever bacteria. And then there was the thermostats and rebuilding of some of the ductwork in that piece. So it wasn't just all air conditioner. That left, leaves five units that are vintage to the building. So we had the remainder of those units to service the council chambers. One serves the library, one serves the community room, and one, for whatever reason, serves the bathrooms and the employee break room, however that got carved out. But those origin, those five units are still, they came with the building. The unit over the community room failed. We had it repaired a couple of times. There's, with the type of equipment, there's greenhouse gas laws, there's new laws on the type of refrigerant that we can use. The refrigerant in that unit is no longer allowed to be used. The vendor has some of it still available, but it's more cost-effective for us to replace the unit than try and patch it and then get refrigerant one more time and then go and replace it. So the other thing with these units and to really go... So, the other thing with these units, and to really go down the rabbit hole on this, we have a boiler here in the building for heat, which is essentially a big hot water tank that heats up the water and then pumps it up into the air conditioning ducts, and then the air blows over it and heats the building, which is horribly inefficient. Was probably really good when the building was built, but by today's standards is not an efficient way to heat a building. So, the, other than the new unit, the unit that was purchased in 2020, all of the units on the roof are capable of gas heating, which is much more efficient. So, this new unit that we're discussing this evening will be gas-capable also. We're going to come back to you at some point. We've got some bids coming in to run natural gas to the existing units so that we can get a more efficient heating system into the building. And although there's no issue right now with the boiler, it is, you know, it's an old unit, and it's horribly inefficient. At some point, it will fail, and when it does, we'd like to be in a position that we're not scrambling trying to get all the heating in the whole building there that we've kind of worked our way into this. So, that's the air conditioner story.
All right. Further questions? Mayor Protem.
No, thank you for your clarification. Thanks, Mayor.
All right. Further questions from council? Councilmember Wilson.
Mr. City Manager, I would assume that we're a little late in the timeframe to be able to try to push this against a COVID reimbursement.
The only way we could do that is we had the ARPA money, but that we've already nominally committed to other projects. There is not ARPA money there. However, what we did do is we have a equipment replacement fund, and last year, we had some budget surplus. When we did the budget this year, we funded that replacement with some of that surplus money. The intent is, is that as we go forward every year, that fund will continue to receive the, essentially, the depreciation of certain assets that are replaceable, not necessarily the streets or the buildings, but there are things that have a lifespan. And if we use that depreciation every year and fund that replacement fund, then when something breaks, we have the money for it. So, with this, we are not using general fund money. We're using equipment replacement money, which is what it's designed for, and then we will continue to fund that in future years.
How much will this leave us in Atlanta?
Seven hundred, some, yeah, somewhere in the 700,000, high 700,000.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Somewhere in the 700,000 range.
Oh, oh, okay.
No, we're not tapping that fund. It's not like it's fifty bucks. It's a legitimate fund with the intention that, yeah, some, at some point, the rest of the air conditioners are going to fail. We use the COVID money to buy new trucks. A truck has a five- or six-year lifespan.
Sure.
That means in five or six years, I'm going to be sitting here going, we need new trucks. Of course, you're going to tell me we just bought them, but then there's money set aside that we have put aside over the years to replace that.
And does the scope of that replacement, does also include maintenance until we decide it's expeditious to go ahead and purchase it?
No, replacement only.
Okay. Thank you.
We don't want to dip into that for maintenance, because then that, we have no measurable way. The idea is, is really the funds we put in are measured to what the depreciation is of that item, and then we're kind of back, we're paying in advance for everything that we're using.
You mean, we're being proactive?
Yeah, don't tell anybody.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. So, you know, there's a big push at the federal and the state level to make buildings more energy-efficient, and I appreciate what you brought forward about the boiler situation. I know that it's been all in the news lately about wanting, the state wanting people to convert to heat pumps, you know, when it comes time, when the old gas furnace, you know, needs changing out, you know, because they want to start using more electricity, less gas is the effort. And there's a lot of grant money I've been reading about that's available to homeowners to do that sort of transition. But what I'm wondering is, you think there's any kind of grant money available for this type of situation?
There may be in the future for something like this, and it's something we can explore. At this point, heat pumps on the residential side are very efficient, but we're talking fairly large commercial applications. So, we get outside of that window of efficiency when we're heating, you know, we're heating spaces. Volume-wise, this room is, you know, the size of a house that takes heating and cooling. So, we get outside of those efficiency windows with the heat pump. And in future years, that may change, and we're certainly willing to explore it.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
All right. Further questions? All right. Any requests to speak on this item from the public?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I'll make the motion to move the item. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. So, that finishes out our consent calendar. Onto public comment. Do we have any requests to speak for items not on the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So, we'll close that public comment, and we have no public hearings tonight, we have no unfinished business, and we have no new business. However, we are going to entertain a request for future agenda item, and this is proposed by City Council. So, just as a reminder under this section pursuant to requirements of Brown Act, no items may be considered other than those listed below as far as for future agenda items. And tonight, we are looking at the request to create ad hoc committee to consider cash, grants, and other assets to be deployed towards youth. This would be a future agenda item, and is requested by Councilmember Sylvia Robles. Would you like to make a little bit of a comment about this item before we consider moving forward with it?
Yeah, recognizing the Brown Act, it's just to, this committee, so we could work with staff to bring some options back to council and have some scenarios as far as funding. And we would also, of course, consider any resolutions that the park commission has already had on supporting some projects.
Okay. So, that's your motion?
Yes, so I moved.
All right. And I'll second that. And so, if we could vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
So, we'll move to City Council Communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. Since our last council meeting, one of the best things I got to attend was the Coffee with the Cop, which was last Tuesday at Woody's Cafe right here in Grand Terrace. And it was Tuesday morning, and had a nice group of people there, and we discussed, you know, things that you want to just talk about with law enforcement. My takeaway from that was that, I mean, it was pretty, really informative because, you know, our police chief here, Lieutenant Lane, he brought a whole complement of crew, his crew there to answer any questions. And what I learned was that, you know, our crime rate is in check, our law enforcement is holding it in place, and we don't really have a crime problem, we don't really have a homeless problem, but what we do have is a traffic problem. And they have a plan for that. And I was excited to hear that because that there's some grants and stuff available, and I liked hearing about those saturation patrols, and so, I look forward to hearing more about that. And also, one of the great things also I learned at that Coffee with the Cop was this program where we're going to, we don't have all the details yet, we're going to start etching VIN numbers in people's catalytic converters, and that's going to take place down at Edmund's Grand Terrace Smog Shop on Michigan Avenue. We don't have all the details yet, but it's exciting news to me because people are going to be able to keep their, track of their catalytic converters. Hopefully, this will have an effect on the theft problem that we have here. And I'd like to give a big shout-out to Johann Gallo for his efforts in making this happen and Edmund, who owns the smog shop. The last thing I want to talk about right now, I know that I harp on this a lot whenever, you know, but that's because I'm the, I'm our committee's representative on this task force, the Solid Waste Advisory Task Force. And so, but the thing that I got to thinking about is, I keep coming here with all this news, which, you know, about all the burdens and requirements that we're putting on our residents and our businesses and things like that. And so, what I thought I'd try today is present you with, real quickly, with a little solution to make life easier on you in handling Senate Bill 1383 and its implementation. So, this is what I've found, one of the ways that it's really convenient for the homeowner. I picked this up, I can't remember if I got this at Bed Bath &amp; Beyond or on Amazon, but this is a stainless steel can, sits in the sink. It's got a carbon filter in the lid of it, so it won't smell, ventilates. Now, here's the beauty, the, here's what I like about this can so much. These little plastic bags, like Mike over at Burt Tech wants us to use to put our waste in, fits this can perfect, and you get these bags all day long over the produce section at any supermarket. And they just, you know, so save your bags, they fit right in there perfect, put all your organic waste, all your food product in there. When it gets full, bag comes right out, tie it up, throw it in the green can, put your next back in. Can stays clean, no smell. It's great. And I just, so I want to throw this out. I wished all those youths had still been here so they could have seen this. They probably didn't even know about Senate Bill 1383 and how this has to get implemented this year.
My grandma would say, "How muchy?"
Huh?
My grandma would ask, "How muchy?"
I only paid about twenty bucks for it. Yeah. It's, and so, and the filters are replaceable, you can buy packs of them, you know. Anyway, so, it's not that difficult for homeowners to participate effectively in 1383 and meet Burt Tech's requirements. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
I'd like to tell Councilmember Jeff, thank you for being knee-deep in the solid waste. I have a question, and we've already approved this, but this is really in the realm of reporting, and this is what I was talking about. And I'll refer this back to the city manager you can get with his accounting people. A&W, for example, is one of our big-ticket items. And A&W, in this last reporting, had a check cut for the realm of $15,000 and some change, which we've been working very hard on to accomplish that. But here's the unique aspect of that. When I break it down, which we have yet to do the breakdown situation, and we can easily do it in our computer, not something that we have to do, you know, individually, because that's not a good way of keeping track of things. The very first invoice, 69319, is a $4,812.50 invoice. It appears to me, because it's labeled "General," that that means that it is a part of the contract. Now, from there on, we have 69327 and so on, all the way down to the bottom of that, there's about ten invoices. And in those invoices, we have smaller amounts, and each one of them have a description. And the descriptions make it very simple for you to be able to partition these items, but it's S-Day's and planning and city prop and financing and refuse and litigation and PW Engineering and PW Street. To me, unless I'm reading this wrong, and I could be, but the example is the same, those look like, to me, extra costs. Those look like they're not covered within our standard contract deal. Now, our contract is a unique contract because it's set up from the standpoint of, you know, hourly costs bounced against a total contract. So, there really isn't a monument per se, but the, in ordinary terms, I would call the 2870, 2021, 564, 495, 329, 315, 280, not all totaled at $7,447, which happened to be almost twice the amount of the contract, as extras. It would be considered non-contract extras. In order for us to properly assess what we're approving, we need to know what is considered contract and what is considered, let's call it, one-time costs. Because if I was doing the budgeting, it would be impossible for me to forecast the next round and say, hey, you know what? We're six months into this budget, and I have to take this all apart to determine what is contract and what is non-contract. And so, that's why I'm suggesting that we do it inside our computer. We subcode our costs, and any of our big-ticket items then are identified with those kinds of little, you know, labels, because you can do it within that. You don't have to create new schedules, and that way, we can also get a paid-to-date column that shows us where we are in our stuff. Because when you have non-contract things bouncing against contract, ordinarily, you put that contract amount in, and paid-to-dates are up to that certain point, and then you go non-contract on top of that, it makes it difficult for you to accurately represent what the future costs are going to be to the year-end. Now, I don't discount the fact that most accounting people will make little extra pages on the side, and they'll keep track of that because they don't want to run out of money either. And the best accounting person that I ever learned from, who has since passed away, used to do that, used to keep a little track of little things. What I'm saying is, in the computer, there's capacity not to have to make those little cheat sheets. And that way, when it come to us, we're looking at it and going, huh, how about that? This is really contract, but this, all this stuff is extra, and maybe, or maybe not, we should include it in next year's budget. See? So, that's a thought matter. So, I'm bringing that up in this timeframe because this is the only timeframe that I can really do that with, okay? And I don't have anything else to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
I didn't attend anything, but I just want to say, I was disappointed I couldn't go Coffee with the Cop. It was finally at an hour that I can be somewhere, and I was out of town. And I just want to comment, seeing all the different youth here and the different sports and being able to look them in the eye, it made me really feel a lot of pride. We have some good kids in this community, and I'm really feeling proud about that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem, Bill Hesse.
Well, I don't know if I, I don't have any city issues, but I do have a thing that happened while I went to Stater Brothers a couple of weeks ago, and I just want to reinforce this because we had a family member who was a victim of spousal abuse, but a witness, I'm not even going to call him a gentleman, a man hit in a woman, and I stopped it and made sure she was all right, but she went, she got back in the car, unfortunately. I called 911, and then I was told by the sheriff's not to follow him anymore. But hopefully, you know, I don't think, you know, I don't know what happened. Hopefully, she's all right. But just realizing, you know, even a man can be abused, but you don't need to take that. There's programs out there, you know, the county has all kinds of resources. Don't be afraid, don't be ashamed to reach out to those resources, think about yourself and your children. You know, they just had a terrible incident that happened in Fontana this week, and now the person's dead in Asparia because of domestic violence. So, please, don't think it's just going to get better when they promise you. You have to get the resources, you have to get the counseling, think of your children, and get the help. The Sheriff's Department, the agencies are there to help you. Don't be afraid. They have all kinds of things, you know, they could put you in a safe house, they could do all kinds of resources. So, please, just reach out for help. That's all I have there.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem. As far as Coffee with the Cop, I will thank Lieutenant Lane again for continuing to have those efforts. And it looked like there was a pretty good crowd this time around, so that's nice to see, and it would be great to fill up the next biggest room. The more people that in this, that are residents are comfortable, and even business owners that are comfortable reaching out when they see something that's suspicious or they have something they want to share, then that's really valuable for them to get to know you and feel comfortable that way. Thank you. All right. So, that's all I have for tonight. Mr. City Manager, do you have communications for us?
No communications tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So, tonight, we have a closed session. Two items. The first one is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section Property is APN 1178-251-03. Negotiating parties, friends of Blue Mountain. City negotiator, Conrad Bolowich, city manager. Under negotiation is price and terms of payment. Item number two is conference with legal counsel. Item number two is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, and that's significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point nine B. Number of cases is one. And so if you are, you know, thank you for being here tonight, those of you that, that were with us, um, anybody that's continuing to, to stay here, that's wonderful. If you are not with us when we return, our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-two at six PM. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. All right? So at this time, we are in recess to close session. All right. We reconvened to open session.